Okay, we'll go ahead and call the work session to order two items that I'd like the council to consider. Is one, we will be removing item number nine from consideration this evening on the work session. And then we have two people wishing to speak on the public forum. Mike O'Brien is here to talk about the Burlington Northern Santa Fe project, and he's got some ideas and some things he would like to share with the council. And then Donovan Keel is here, and he'd like to speak about the gun range. So with that, Mike, we'll go ahead and call on you. So now, this is the public forum, and this is different than the council, so we may have some interaction here because this is a work session. During the council meeting, there is no interaction, and then the other thing is, there's no time limit during the work session. But we would respectfully request you to keep it to five, five to 10 minutes.
I've heard that before.
Perfect, good. I'm glad the message is consistent.
First of all, my name is Michael Bryan. I'm from Wilmer as of two months. I just moved here. I lived in this area for over 30 years, in Spicer area. And I really appreciate being able to come to the council and talk about this. This isn't something I just noticed just recently. I've been always noticing the sound of the horns of the train coming through our community. Because I spent a lot of time in Wilmer. I spent a lot of time at night in Wilmer, and I thought, wow, this would really be a hard thing to swallow, living in this community. So what I did is, the first thing, before I started any of this, I looked at it on the safety aspect. I said, if this was a pre, if this was what we call the quiet zone, would this cause any undue safety cause, issues? And from what I could tell, it would not. Okay? And I did that through calling the railroad, and I also called the DOT, and then I also talked to the city engineers and other people as well when I was doing this. Not saying that there's always going to be some, when you go to a quiet zone, there's always going to be issues with people that may not hear or may not have a distinct advantage on the crossings when there's no horns. However, when you look at the situation in Wilmer, and the speed is, what they call it, is 10 miles an hour, 10 miles an hour is coming into areas like Wilmer. That speed is well underneath that zone, okay? And the way this all started, I handed out a sheet to you. I think everybody's got one. If you start at the bottom, I sent a message to an individual, his name was Jeff Savage. He was the regional hub for four or five different states, and Minnesota is one of them. And I said, Mr. Savage, I have been reviewing the information and steps it takes to create a quiet zone in my community of Wilmer, Minnesota. I will be contacting the DOT at my city council and requesting railroad steps as required by this council. I have decided to pursue this because of other communities have successfully done this in Minnesota and my neighboring state of Iowa. Training speeds is less than 10 miles per hour, and all crossings have SSP or gates and lights. I'm taking this action due to the excessive blowing of horns between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. In the span from 2:00 to 3:15 a.m., horns blew 52 times. Over, 10 of them lasted over 15 seconds. Most of averaged five to seconds, only a few under five. This is excessive and unnecessary at this time of day with R.M.A.R. crossings. Can you give me a local contact or give me some information on who I could contact? And I said, I have contacted the DOT and the mayor of Wilmer. And then if you look at the next one, he immediately followed up, a young lady by the name of Amy Macbeth, I think some of you know who she is. She followed up. Mr. Savage has forwarded your email to me as I'd be your initial contact for these questions. As a BNSF, unless there is a designated quiet zone, the horn must be sounded as trains approach crossing regardless of the crossing protection. And communities along our railroad have pursued quiet zones. The road authority, the city in this case, initiates and pursues the process. The railroad and the federal railroad administration amend that, and the city would need to conduct a diagnostic end for these crossings. Information on these trains, holding a rule that accruals must follow. And on the quiet zone process can be followed at the link below. The contact for BNS railroads are all quiet zones. And Rick Scott would be our contact if we follow up with this. That's what she gave us. And then the following page, if you read, again, I would talk to Mr. Savage. I forwarded this information to this council, and I asked him that if I could speak, like I'm doing right now, to talk about this. And then if you look, I've talked to the county engineer, city engineers, and they told me that there already are quiet zones in this community. And those quiet zones are located at the crossing at Wilmer Avenue Southwest by Jenny O'Turkey, and the crossing at Trotta Avenue Southwest, just west of 16th Street, and they have caused unknown, no unknown safety hazards. And so I followed up with that, and talked to the city some more, and then I talked to the railroad. And following up with that, I, they gave me a website, and I've got a stack about this thick that I didn't copy you with, but I will give to you. But it's, what was necessary, it's going to have to be. You're going to have to do a lot of follow-up. You're going to have to do some checking on this. But it is, it is something that can be done. And I say the two others, we already have two quiet zones that have caused no issues whatsoever, and there's no reason why we can't have quiet zones. The key issue here is the speed of the trains coming into the community. They're not coming in hot, they're coming in very slowly. What they're doing is coupling, uncoupling, changing tracks. They've got three different, they've got Wayzata, they've got Morrison-Marshall. And you know all about that because we're looking at switching those now. So there is no real issues with undue speed to be concerned about. The DOT, I talked in length with the DOT, Mr. Rasmussen and Mr. East. I talked with them. They also said that they had really no concerns other than, because they're in trunk highways, they really don't deal with our community, okay? But if you have a new, let's say if you're designating a new crossing, and you're doing more construction, they have a berm that needs to be in place so people can't go around the block, okay? But if you're not doing anything in new construction, those are not required, okay, right now. So if you look, I've got this, you don't have this, or, yes, you do, I'm sorry, the fact sheet, okay? Why do locomotives need to sound their horns? Okay? He goes, since their inception, railroads have sounded locomotive horns and whistles in advance of grade crossings under other circumstances, universal safety precaution during the 20th century. And he skipped on to the next paragraph. In accordance with statutory mandate, FRA issued regulations took effect in 2005 that required locomotive horns to be sounded in advance of all public highway rail crossings and provide local communities the option of silencing them by establishing quiet zones. Under the federal regulation, locomotive engineers must sound their train horns for a minimum of 15 seconds and a maximum of 20 seconds in advance of all public grade crossings. Then it says, if a train is traveling faster than 45 miles an hour, which they are not, engineers do not have to sound the horn until it's within a quarter mile of the crossing, even if the advance warning is less than 15 seconds. If a train stops in close proximity to a cross, the horn does not have to be sounded and the train begins to move again. A good faith exceptional location engineers can precisely estimate their arrival. Then it says, wherever feasible, train horns must sound in standardized patterns of two long, and I'm sure you've heard these, one short and one long. Now, that excessive long, I've counted them over 15 seconds long, okay? And the horn must continue to sound until the lead locomotive or train occupies the grade crossing. The minimum volume level for locomotive horns is 96 decibels, okay? Then it says, establishing a quiet zone, and I've got, like I say, I've got a stack like this. Only a local government or public agency may establish a quiet zone. That would be you. Which must be at least a half a mile in length, and have at least one public highway railroad grade crossing. Every public grade crossing in a quiet zone must be equipped at a minimum with a standard or conventional automatic warning device, which is flashing lights and gates. Communities have the option to establish partial, and there's a number of partial quiet zones in Minnesota and full quiet zones in Minnesota, and I have lists of all the states, or all the cities, restricting locomotive horn sounding during overnight hours between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. So I just asked the council, even if you consider the 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. restriction, which have been a lot easier to acquire, from what the people I've talked to, okay? I don't see any reason from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. why they have to blow the horns when they're coming in these, coming into Wilmer at speeds under 5 miles an hour. And that's kind of what I've been told by the railroad itself. And I think, I really believe that this is something we can do, and I think the people of Wilmer should have, should have this. I don't think they need to have all these horns blown all night long. Again, if it's going to be a safety hazard, I wouldn't even be here. But after talking to all these different people, I don't believe this is a safety hazard. Specifically because it's on almost every intersection, it has controlled gates, it has controlled lights and bells, and, like I say, they don't come in in excess of speed. They're coupling, uncoupling, train, and changing different ways that they're going. Anybody have any questions about what I've talked about so far? I know I've covered a lot, there's a lot here to cover, but I'm just kind of, blah, 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 blah. But I've only got five minutes.
And you already took seven.
I suppose, yeah.
Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would recommend that staff research the quiet zones further, and if the changes seem to be appropriate and workable, that the city administrator have an ordinance draft and bring it back to the council for review.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
It's refreshing, and it's appreciated by myself, and I hope I speak for others, that you would do the legwork to make the communication and pull some of this information together, because there are, I mean, this is something that's been talked about for a long time, and the rules, especially when talking railroad, get very intricate and very complex. And so to have, to have a concerned citizen out there helping us with some of this, with this legwork and some of the details, like I said, it's refreshing, and I appreciate the fact that you're here.
Thank you. I told Mr. Mayor when I started this, Mr. Mayor and I have worked on other things together before, and I told him, I said, I will not bring anything to the council until I know the results and how to fix it. I said, I'm not going to just come up and say, I want to do this, I'm going to bring it to you and I tell you how to do it.
Well, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Councilmember Meski.
Yes, I would also like to say thank you. I have a question that I guess if you were going to ask staff to look at it, is, there's always been trains in Wilmer, and they've always been sounding their horns, and I know that probably citizens have complained about it all the time. The two that are already listed, I'm curious, how was the process of getting those two established, and at the time where we denied the rest of them? And if we weren't, it's strange that we probably haven't pursued it. So I'd like to know a little history on those. And then, when the Y project is going in, will we have less train traffic coming in? Will they be able to increase their speed at that point through the city? That'll be a question that would be for, obviously, the railroad, because it would seem to me, I didn't realize this was a process that would be easily initiated by the council. I think if it's something we can do, let's make that initiation.
Is the train, the train whistle just blows?
I just got an email just 10 minutes ago from Curly Whitman, and it's also, was sent to the Assistant City Engineers Office. And it says that those on Trot and also on Wilmer Avenue were established in 2013 and Just got that just now.
Mm-hmm. So what happened, the process that was before, is that we wanted the quiet zone 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And so what Mr. O'Brien is suggesting is that we do the 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., which is less restrictive. And so it was a rather lengthy process that the council went through before. Former Mayor Heitke started working on it, and I think they were implemented when Mayor Yanish was in office, but Mayor Heitke is the one that started the work on them. And so we do have those two. I don't know that there's been any trouble. Councilmember Christiansen was a big proponent of it back then, and he was championing that event as well. And then when they first started, now, I don't want to put words in your mouth here, Councilmember Christiansen, but I think to start with, there was a little confusion as to whether they were supposed to blow them or not, and so that took a while, if I remember correctly, is that right?
Yes, and they can actually blow them in a quiet zone if they deem it necessary.
Right.
It's 3:00 in the morning, and they see car lights coming up or something, they can blow them.
Yes, they can.
And I believe the two that were done, were done because we were reconstructing the road, first of all, Ginyo, and then same with Trotta Avenue. We were redoing the road there, and we thought, that's perfect time to put it in the quiet zone, so we did it there also.
Right. The upgrade to the quiet zone is, if you go to Painesville, the DOT told me this, they just did an upgrade, they call it the berm. It's where they can't go around the gates, okay? And if you would do a new construction on a crossing, they may make you put a berm in.
Sure.
That's a possibility. But right now, the only one that we have, but there is the one on these two, on these two we just talked about.
Yeah, there's berms on those.
There's berms on those.
Right, correct.
Yep.
Thanks. Councilmember Alvarado.
Mr. O'Brien, thank you for coming. Appreciate that and sharing this with us. Do you have some examples of some cities that have this 10 to 7?
There's, there's so many. There's so many full ones, full quiet zones, but there is just a, I have a sheet, yes, that I'll give you, that has a list of all the Minnesota quiet zones, full and partial.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Palmer, followed by our Planning and Development Director Peterson. So, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have added this on, but it just popped into my brain, because a year, about a year and a half ago, I did some investigation into this, and I hit a roadblock when I was sorting through the details, and there seemed to be some confusion or mixed language regarding quiet zones and the number of tracks sequentially with the crossing arms. Did you, in your research, find anything that pertained to the number of tracks at an actual crossing that affected the ability to get that quiet zone designation?
Rick Scott is our contact, and I was told to contact him, or that you should contact him, and that all of those questions would be answered.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Kelvin, members of the council. A number of years ago, the city council did engage a professional consultant in the railroad industry, and they conducted a quiet zone study for the city of Wilmer. They identified the crossings where it was feasible to construct quiet zones. The 10th Street and 7th Street crossings were labeled as virtually unworkable due to the geometrics of those crossings, the number of tracks, the proximity to Highway 12, which impacts the ability to get a long median in there to prevent vehicles from crossing the tracks. Staff can certainly research this issue, see if there's any updates, but just so this council knows that there's enough new members on the council, you need to know that there has been a lot of time put into this in the past. And Councilmember Christiansen's entirely correct that the reason the ones were put in on Trot and Wilmer Avenue was because it was just an opportunity at the time of a total reconstruction. And if those same opportunities could present themselves for 7th Street and 10th Street, you know, then I think the council needs to look at it. As far as this abbreviated quiet zone, where you've just restricted it to certain hours, I've not heard of that. We can do some research into that. One thing I do know, the city engineers informed me that typically you can, if you have quiet zone crossings, you have to have them at least one half mile apart. And so 10th and 7th are not a half mile apart, so there'd be an either-or type of thing there, and again, unless some special dispensation is granted by the Federal Railway Administration. But just a few things to think about as staff begins their homework and looks into this matter.
Yeah, and I think when staff had looked at it before, it was the full quiet zone. What Mr. O'Brien, and I did share that with him when we had our conversation, but what he's suggesting is the 10 to 7, which I think the rules are different for that, so.
Yeah, and we'll look into that. I know we'd also looked at a less restrictive type of quiet zone where they use directional horns.
Right.
And instead of broadcasting, they just shoot down the tracks. But the consultant's study on that showed that that wasn't feasible for our geometrics and our yard and our crossings here as well. But again, we can dig out the old studies and look for some updates and get that information back to the council.
Sure. Councilmember Meski.
That was going to be my question. I think we're looking at a partial quiet zone, and I think that if it's, that's a little easier to do, I think that's actually what probably more citizens want anyway, so.
Right. And of course, you know, we know we have people listening right now to the council meeting, and they're going to say, well, but I sleep during the day. And, you know, yeah, I used to too, so, but.
I thought it was interesting.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
99% of the people that I talked to was in favor of this.
Sure.
Okay. The one person that I talked to said that, oh, it's like a white noise to me, I've been around it so long. Well, I did some, I did some investigation on that too, the psychological part of it. You never get used to it. Emotionally, you're still hearing it. Even though you're sleeping, it's still registering in your subconscious. And it does cause different things. And it was very interesting to know that even though they think that they have blocked it out, they really haven't.
Sure. Thank you for your time, and I think, staff, you understand the direction that you've got?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Donovan Keel, and would like to speak in regards to the gun range.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmen and councilperson for the opportunity to speak today. I start off by saying I'm happy to hear that the range was inspected and didn't pass inspection. That's going to take away about half of my comments, so they'll be a little bit briefer as well, so if I jump around, that's going to be why. The rest of it, I want to try and address some of the items that were brought up in the last council meeting as I watched it on the tape. There were a lot of different numbers and amounts that were thrown around, and hopefully I can clear some of them as it was explained to me by city staff. I'd heard before, 1.4 million, 750,000, and some others. I think 1.4 million was the total project, which was never completed. 750, what was spent on the entire building and maintenance. And as far as the cleaning and the range portion, that was 282,000. So just helpful on that part there. The rubber blocks, there was some talk about those. Those rubber blocks, the whole intention of that type of a design of a wall is that they're supposed to be rotated back and forth. So if some get shot up, they would just be rotated to a section that is not being used, and therefore the wall is going to be lasted longer. Unfortunately, when they were installed, they were installed so that the seams of these blocks were right in line with the shooting lane. Well, what that did cause it, instead of just having one or two blocks expand out, four blocks expanded out. When they first got put in, we did point that out to the city staff. Well, at that time, it's already in, we'll look at that later. We came back and revisited it one year after it had been open with city staff, and this time, some city consultants came down there with us as well. And we'd made a recommendation to put five or six blocks stacked right in front of where the actual shooting lane is. That way, when people are shooting and those blocks get full of lead, it will just be a few blocks that are going to have to be replaced instead of the entire wall. At that time, it was decided by city staff that we appreciate the idea, and we'll look at that in the future, but right now, we have a wall that is working. We'll deal with it when this wall wears out, and then perhaps put that in. If we are going to put a different type of wall in, may I make a recommendation of something that was looked at as a rubber berm instead? It is close to the same cost, just slightly more, except that you'd have the added benefit of reclaiming the lead. These rubber blocks that are there, you cannot reclaim any lead. That $25,000 quote really isn't for the blocks, because the blocks only cost anywhere from $56 to $84 each. They're pretty inexpensive. The cost is for the disposal of those lead blocks, because there's just nothing you can do. You can't really separate the lead from the rubber, and they're just have to be into waste. But in a rubber berm system, we can reclaim that wet, that lead that is in there, and depending how much is shot, of course, they could reclaim partial or all of the cost for building that in there as well. One other recommendation I would like to make that we brought up to city staff, just to catch the council up to speed as well. The sensor that turns the fan on in the indoor range is located in the viewing room, which means anytime anybody walks in there for any reason, that exhaust fan turns on for the next hour. We'd recommend to move that sensor, which is in the ceiling, just in front of the range door, on the opposite side of the range door, so it won't go on unless somebody actually goes into the range to use the range. Just by talking with other instructors and other people who are running the range on those nights, it might get turned on four to seven times because somebody walks in. We need to access the safe. We need to go into the room to do something. They're teaching a class. And, well, four to seven times where that thing is being run and nobody's actually shooting. As large as that fan is, and I don't even think it fits in this room, that takes quite a bit of electricity. We would save the city a great amount of money by just moving that sensor inside the, inside the shooting range itself. There was also some talk about the cost versus the benefit to the community. Address that just briefly. In Minnesota, there's about 4.7% permit to carry holders. In Canoai County, there's 5.7. I guess people in Canoai County likes guns more than the rest of the, rest of the entire state. That translates in Canoai County to 2,400 people that have a permit to carry. Well, not every gun user has a permit to carry. There's certainly a lot more that don't ever go to that training class. Wilmer Rifle and Pistol Club, we have about 1,400 family memberships over the past five years that can bring up to four guests as well. So there's a number of people in the community that are enjoying the shooting sports. There was concern also compared to other systems, the park system, or the aquatic park, or ice hockey. All of these things have a capital expense. Some have more, some have less. Obviously, a city park doesn't have much capital expense, but it does not bring any money in. Hockey has a very large capital expense, brings in some money here and some money there. Each one has a different investment into it. Up until two years ago, when we had these extravagant upgrades that had to go in there, for 40 years, the range has had a positive income stream to the, to the city. Well, by making a few changes, being able to make a red berm, changing how the electricity and the fan gets shut on and off, we can save the money, save the city some money, and provide an income stream for all the people that want to use it. And apparently, like I said, there are more people who like guns in Canoai County than the rest of the state. So I would hope you would take these things into factor. Any questions?
Council, any questions for Mr. Keel?
I have one. What was the price that you said a block would be if we did not have to remove that lead?
Blocks in the Twin Cities, there's a few different vendors. They average $84 to $99. If you buy them in bulk, they're $56. That's for the block itself.
Right.
It's the installation and the, more importantly, the disposal that is where most of that cost is.
Thank you.
On that point too, Green Bay Lead. I don't know them specifically, but a comment was made also as like, well, maybe they're just trying to keep themselves in business. There are two other companies. One is in Colorado, I forget where the other one is as well, that they all do that same thing, that we might be able to get comparative quotes from them. If they were the ones who came into the cleaning, well, for example, when the range was cleaned two years ago, it was deemed, we are completely clean, we did a thorough job. And then one year later, they're claiming that lead was tracked into the hallways. Well, we've got a brand-new berm, we've got a brand-new exhaust system, it kind of seems unlikely that it was tracked in there. They cleaned it, it failed, they cleaned it, it failed, they cleaned it, it failed a third time, so the city decided just to encapsulate all that lead in there and then put sticky mats. Well, now, we've got a new fan, we've got new berms, and not one or two sticky mats, but we've got four sticky mats that you have to step on as you exit. And then they're coming back and saying that they want $25,000 to clean the, clean the area again. Well, again, I don't know them, so perhaps this is too insulting, but maybe they're just trying to keep themselves in business. Seems like the city has done everything they can, more than reasonable, to keep that lead in there, and maybe we should get some competitive quotes from these other two, excuse me, other two companies.
Thank you. Councilwoman Palmer.
Thank you, Mayor. This question maybe isn't directed so much for Donovan, maybe for our city administrator and maybe legal. With the motion that was passed the last meeting, the verbiage, the specific verbiage that pertained to the motion, I'm wondering whether or not that, that deemed the range closed from that point on, or whether or not it was contingent upon the safety inspection?
From my perspective, when I talked to staff, I said it's closed due to a reinspection. That was my understanding. The council's intent was to close it until there had been a reinspection.
So since, I guess according to you, there has been the inspection and...
I heard that there was and that it passed.
And it passed, so would that deem the range then open?
I believe the city administrator is going to bring that...
I'm going to bring it up tonight to the council.
To the council.
Okay.
So his recommendation is going to be to open it, but he wants to give us more details during the council meeting when we can act on it.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And that was late in the day, well, no, it was midday on...
It was Friday at 11.
Midday about, 11 o'clock.
I had just one other thought too, and discussing the fees for it, to be the usage both by the public and by the instructors. Certainly a very tough task to try to find a balance of what will somebody pay, and how do I break even with it, and I sympathize with that. do I break even with it, and I sympathize with that. It used to be a time where I held much larger classes myself, where it was easy to break even at that point. Now I've switched to trying to do smaller classes, so I can do more one-on-one work with people. Smaller, meaning eight to 10 people. Well, my last two months, I did not have enough people to be able to pay for the fees of the range and the other costs that I incur, and I ended up canceling my last two classes because I only had a few people signed up. So if the range fees go up even more, it certainly does make it harder for me personally. But again, I sympathize with that balance of trying to find, how much do you charge to break even? Will people stop using it? Don't envy you there.
Right. What are your fees for... What are you charged for doing a class?
Most of the instructors range from $79 to $100.
No, I mean, what does the city charge you for that class?
Oh, it is $40 an hour for the actual gun room, or the range usage, and then $25 for the day for the classroom. So it'd be $105, which is what I would pay on that.
Sure. Okay. Because that was a question that was asked at the last meeting, and nobody really knew that answer, so... Any additional questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much for your comments. I think you will be pleased when we get to the regular council meeting, and I'm certainly looking forward to the report from the city administrators.
And I wish I could be here, but I have a board meeting myself that I have to be off to, so thank you for your time.
I understand, and thank you for the work you do for keeping our community safe. So, you know, we're all in favor of you guys carrying in our community, so don't get the wrong message. So, yes, that's good work, so. You bet. We only have to be reminded this week, actually today, of what happened up in St. Cloud, so... But anyways. So with that, we'll actually get to the agenda. Work session, committee... Work session versus committee structure. Continued discussion. At the conclusion of our last discussion, I made a number of comments, and I'll leave those comments set where they were, and at this point, I'll open it to the council. The discussion is, we said we were going to evaluate this after a six-month period of time. We're well past the six months, and so we are here to have that discussion this evening. Councilmember Mesky asked it to be the first item on the agenda, and of course, we have public comment first, and so it is our first agenda item. Council, who wishes to speak on this issue? Councilmember Christensen?
I'm not afraid to open it up. I usually do. I personally think we should at least try for six months or more, to go back to the four committees we had. It provides a much more relaxed atmosphere for the community. Our taxpayers come and speak to us. It gives us a time to discuss in depth whatever their concerns are. I haven't seen that happen at the committee meetings that we have here prior to our council meeting. I think we owe it to our constituents. It's, you know what we're doing, the single meeting before the council meeting is fine. It's really nice for us, for staff. It's less time involved. But is that correct? Is that what we're... Are we supposed to be concerned with our time or our constituents? I know in Public Works and Labor, which I've been on for several years, we had a lot more people come to speak to us about concerns than we have had at these work session meetings prior to the council meeting. Another one is, it makes for a long day for me, especially on a Monday. I come here directly from my office, and I got to spend another 5:15 until 8 o'clock, 8:30, 9 o'clock. It gets to be a long day. I would say that this is best for our constituents. It's not for us time-wise, but we're here to serve them. And I think it's a much better way to serve them and hear their concerns in a better atmosphere around the table instead of on TV in front of a microphone here. It's kind of intimidating for people to come and speak to... It's like you're in court. That's what it's like. You stand up there, and you've got all these people judging you and listening to you, and it just isn't comfortable for the general public. And I think we got a lot more done. Another thing is, we were all closer to staff. Right now, staff is... I see them now, today, Monday. Next two weeks, I won't see them. I see them again. We don't hear their concerns. I don't know what happened in Public Works the last two weeks. I know we get our weekly minutes or reports from our administrator, but I don't know what the heck happened in Public Works the last two weeks, the last month, the last six months. I don't know. I drive down the street, and I see something happening on a corner, tearing it up, and I don't recall listening or hearing about it. Finance is definitely, we need a committee, a finance committee and a labor committee, for sure. But I would opt for the four standing committees and try it. The new people in the council have never been part of that style of governing, where we have the four committees and council members, the chair of those committees. So I say we go back to that for six months or whatever, and give it a try and let them see. But I think it's for our constituents. It isn't for our benefit, these work sessions. It's, we're here for the tax-paying public. I get calls quite often from retired people, and they'll ask questions that I don't know what's going on. They say, "Well, I heard at coffee," or "I saw this." And I say, "Well, I don't know anything about it." So I would opt for at least trying that for the benefit of our constituents, mostly.
Councilmember Osmus?
Well, I think the elephant in the room is that part of the reason why those didn't work is you can say that it's for the constituents, but we had council members that didn't show up for those committee meetings. So they were canceled, or there was a scramble to see if somebody else could fill their spot. And that happened over and over and over again. So this way, you get people to show up, and it had to have been addressed year after year. So if we were to say at this point, "Okay, we're going to commit, and we're going to say we're going to go to these committee meetings," I have to believe that was done for years and years. But still, meetings were canceled. I like being able to hear the information from all four committees. I think that gets everybody, is, everybody's able to be informed and up to speed at the same level of exactly how things were said, the tone it was said, the flavor of the comments, and you just feel like you're much more informed.
Councilmember Mesky?
I didn't have my hand up, but if you want me to talk, I will.
I thought you had your hand up.
Nope. That's all right. I was just putting my thoughts...
You were just going like that to make sure I seen Julie?
But I would say, as a person who sat on both, attendance was an issue, but it doesn't mean that it was broken. It means we had people that were not committed to the system that we had put in place. I wouldn't say the committee structure was broken by any means. And I do believe there was a much deeper conversation about the topics when we had committee structures, that it wouldn't lend itself to having these work sessions. They would be very, very long if we went to the same detail. That detail was available in minutes from those as well. So, and you could go back, and those were recorded, and you could hear them. But that would, again, mean that you're going to be putting in one or two hours per committee to work and review them. So, I mean, I understand this expedites time, but I do believe you do sacrifice some of the depth that you would have had with the committee structure. But just because we had an attendance issue, I don't think the system was broken. It just was not working with the people that we had around the table and their schedules. That's it for now. I'm still writing my thoughts for other things. But I think the finance and the labor are the ones that I'm seeing, just as a person who was in that other system. Those are the ones I'm seeing coming up short here for the depth that we talked about before. So if we're going to continue to do the working session, and I get an impression that there's not a lot of desire to move to a committee structure, but if we do not go back to a committee structure, we need to find some hybrid kind of a system where we can still get that depth, particularly in finance and labor, at these working sessions that we haven't done. And I know we have done a piece where we're getting some financial update pieces, and I think that's a move in the right direction. But I've heard us also kind of bat around the idea of, you know, when we have five Mondays, maybe a fifth Monday would be dedicated to some of these committee activities as well. But we need to start, we have to look back and say, what was good about the committee structure, and can we weave that in if you are not, if the council's not willing to move to a committee structure or explore that? Because currently, we are missing a few things with the working sessions.
Councilmember Swantus, followed by Christensen again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would be in support of taking that fifth Monday of the month, whether that happens three times a year or four, or whatever it is, and using that for a labor relations meeting so we can have some of those in-depth conversations. I will say I like this structure because everyone hears the same thing at the same time. And just as there were issues, perhaps, of people not attending the meetings, there were also others that felt obligated to attend meetings in which they did not sit on that committee because they wanted to and felt they needed to hear what was happening in that meeting, and others that would go back and listen to those recordings. There is real value to everyone sitting at the table and being a part of the conversation. I also do not miss having the minutes read at the city council meeting. In my mind, that was just an absolute waste of people's time, and we are able to use a city council meeting then for more discussion and interaction versus reading the minutes. And I mean this with all due respect, but just as we have not participated, we being the new council members, have not participated or been on the council when the committee meetings existed. We had two council members who did not attend two of the three working sessions. And so to say that it's not working is really unfair when you have not participated in those conversations. And I would say that our work sessions were invaluable, and the way that the budget has come out, and I guess we'll see from tonight's conversation, but it allowed us to create a plan, to all buy into that plan, and to move forward. Now, I think you're going to see us moving very efficiently on things because we're all on the same page and rowing in the same direction. So I like the committee, excuse me, I like the work sessions. I like having the extra working sessions, and I would be in favor of having, taking advantage of those extra Mondays.
So you're talking about the three work sessions. You meant three retreats, correct?
The three retreats, yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as myself and Rick missing the retreats, you know, we have our lives planned, and a retreat in the middle of summer, we have, how many, 10 weeks in the summer, 12 weeks we can use? He's got kids, grandkids in baseball. I've got grandkids in baseball. We're playing every weekend. And it's not holding onto Saturday. Any day during the week, I'm available, from 8:00 in the morning until 12:00 at night. But we hit it on a Saturday, and we're out of town at tournaments, folks. That was a poor planning. Wasn't our fault, so don't blame us. As far as people missing committee meetings, I bet I can't think of six of them in the last two years that failed to meet, the last two years that we had them. And most of them happened last year, prior to the elections. We had three people on the council not running again for council. I'm not blaming them for not attending, but it's that point in their life and their career in the council, or not a career, but their time. And so that's an unfair way to express, "We can't have committee meetings because people aren't attending." Doggone it, I attended 99.9% of them in the last 23 years. I'm very dedicated to this council, and the committee meetings did work. I don't want to just have the work sessions for our benefit. The committee meetings were important, and I agree with Sean, that Councilmember Mesky, as I'll be reported. Finance and labor are intricate committees to have. I mean, we aren't getting the detailed information we used to at finance committee meetings or labor. And labor needs to be done in a smaller room. They're recorded, those meetings are, but it's a lot easier to deal with the labor unions and their representatives in a small room at City Hall, the committee meeting, with four representatives of the council and our labor and HR person there. And we can work out the details, and they're all recorded. You don't have to come to these meetings, committee meetings. I know Councilmember Nelson listened to quite a few of them, because she would ask questions about the ones she couldn't attend. You can go on a website and listen to every meeting that we have. I mean, they're all recorded. It's a time consumption thing again, but you can listen when you want to listen. You don't have to be there 4:45 on Tuesday afternoon. So these arguments about it's going to be harder for us to have people there, and nobody's attending, I don't buy that. I think we're being disingenuous to our constituents by not having these committee meetings and getting in more depth information so we know what's going on. So when somebody calls us on the phone and says, "Ron, what's happening over at Tottenham 12th Street?" And I say, "I don't know." "Well, they're tearing up the street, or the hydrant's gone," or something like that. I feel dumbfounded, but I tell them. I don't get this information anymore because I don't come to a committee where we actually get that in-depth information to us. So I speak for them, and if we don't go, if the majority of the council decides not to do it, hey, I'm okay with that, but I just think we're doing our constituents no good by not having at least finance and labor. But I would rather have all four of them, and it appears that this council is not ready to do the committee, the four committees that we had. I'll do whatever the council decides.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Plomon.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. I support staying with the work sessions, but making some changes to them. I think one of my biggest frustrations with the committee structure is that the council didn't respect the work of the committees, and that you would go to the committee meetings and get the information, and it was a repeat at the council meetings, but all eight council members wanted the same information, and I think in order to make their decisions. And I think the work sessions provide us that environment for all of us to hear the same things. I think we do have to pick up the pace with going back to some of the things that we used to get in the committee structure, and I think we are working to do that. I think it is more efficient for our staff. I don't see this as any more intimidating than coming to a committee meeting. In fact, some people felt very intimidated to come to certain committee meetings. In fact, I have people asking why this session isn't live, why it's not, you know, recorded, because we do move things from this session to the council agenda. So I speak in favor of the work session. I do think that we can make some changes to make sure that we are getting the detailed information. I think if we all work at reading our weekly updates and we ask staff to give us updates regularly, we can be in tune to what's going on here and do this efficiently. And so I would hope that we would stay with the work session structure that we have in place.
Councilmember Plomon, followed by Councilmember Elverado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I don't speak in favor of either because I'm undecided. But so far, the comments that have been made have been a good hot dish of pros and cons being Minnesota, and that analogy fits. Just a couple observations from my perspective. With regards to time and scheduling and all that, I personally was in favor to moving to the work session format, just because I have a very busy schedule at work. I have three little kids at home, and, you know, every week, having a lengthy meeting Monday nights and then having, you know, somewhat lengthy meetings on the off week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, or whatever they ended up being, you know, sometimes mid-afternoon, was difficult for my work schedule, but I had to make it work. But for some of those reasons, I was in favor of moving to the work session, giving it a good, fair try. But a couple concerns that I have, I do agree with the thought that I believe because of the time constraint, we're not getting as in-depth of information. Sometimes we're not having the discussion, the more... Well, I guess just, some of the discussions seemed more personal, and there was more time allocated because we were there for specifically Public Works, Public Safety, or we were specifically there for community development. We had two hours to sit and discuss if there was a bigger project coming on the table. We could discuss those details, whereas here, I feel like it is, as Audrey mentioned, sometimes it is a bit rushed. And, you know, when that is the case, it kind of feels a little bit overwhelming when there's another council meeting to follow. As far as participation goes, I can see both arguments. You know, some may feel intimidated to come, you know, to a larger auditorium versus a smaller conference room, and I think an argument can be made both ways. I think it's a subjective argument, but I can hear both sides of that. But then the third element is, you know, it's related to the time, but I think... But then the third element is, you know, it's related to the time, but I think, you know, not really, you know, I mean, it all is about net effect and net results for what we get done and for the constituents. But I find, at least myself personally, and hopefully some others, whether they're willing to admit it or not, on a single night after three or four hours, I can find myself, you know, without much of a break in between the meetings, I can find myself just a little bit exhausted or, you know, maybe even borderline agitated. Because, and not that I don't enjoy what we're doing here, because I honestly do, but it's just when you have so much information to process in one night, for me, it can get to be like, man, you've gone through a whole bunch of stuff, and it felt like it was, maybe not rushed, but, you know, it just, that's kind of just the way it is, that, you know, by the end of the evening or towards the end of the evening, you kind of just feel like the discourse or like the nature of the conversation is altered just a little bit because we're tired. And I don't think that's an unfair statement to make. And so for those reasons, I think, you know, I think there's plenty of, again, pros and cons that can be weighed, but I want to make sure that, as for myself and my own opinion moving forward, that we are mostly focused on the net effect of what we're doing and net results. What is the end result? How are we getting the best outcome? And how are we spending our time most effectively for the constituents? Because at the end of the day, you know, it's all about the information. We're only as good as the information that we get. And so it's all about the information transmission and the dialogue that goes on between each other at the table and back and forth with staff. And so, again, I don't think it's a clear, you know, it's a clear-cut issue one way or the other, but I would hope that, you know, I'm weighing it with an open mind, and I would hope that everybody would be able to as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarado.
As far as being able to talk to staff, I've never had a problem of reaching out to them and getting answers from them, whether it's via email or directly when we interact. So I don't see that as being a need to have a council or a committee meeting, because I find that they're very approachable. And we can, I've never felt like I've been ignored by them, and I appreciate that. I heard a complaint against the committee meeting where it seemed to be a little redundant to come in and have to rehash all the minutes. And hear all that again, like Audrey says, we have to put our faith in some of these committees, like our economic development and public works, and not public works, but I can't think of it right now. But anyways, but we have to put our faith in some of the people that we hire, now hire, bring in to do these committee works and trust them and go from there. I think that this thing, this working session, can be adapted and changed. We get a big agenda here, and I don't know if we have to cut back on that so we can have greater discussion, or can we adjust that? I don't know. I like the fifth Monday idea, to spread it out. I'm leaning towards giving this more time. I don't think six months is a make or break opportunity on this working session. I think we've got to give it an opportunity to grow. Thank you.
Councilmember Schwante, followed by Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say this, but I will also put a caveat out there that it would be difficult for me to do for the rest of this year. But if the time that we have available for discussion is an issue, and we're really cutting these meetings too tight and too short, then an option would be to meet every other Monday. Mondays, we're not meeting as the city council, we meet as a work session so that we have that time available. Now, as I throw that out there, please know that I have the rest of my year scheduled, and I know I have meetings on Monday nights, so, that are work-related. But that is an option for us.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm hearing a lot of reasons why we shouldn't do it, when nobody's, several have never been in a committee meeting. There's this question of, or the consideration that the minutes we read is rehashing what we did at the committee meeting. It's also informing the public. Now, information is powerful. And by the minutes of that meeting being read, these people know what's going on. They're not getting the information than they have in the last six, seven months, eight months, going on nine, that they used to get, the public. And this, not this meeting, but the council meetings are watched by, I want to say thousands of people. There's a lot of people watching. I mean, many, many, many of them. And they don't get the gist of the meetings by reading the newspaper the next day. It's just, it's not all there. And you don't get the flavor of the meeting or the flavor of the minutes when they're not read. So that's a lame excuse for me to hear that, that it's, the minutes just aren't worth reading, and they're rehashing what we did. Well, doggone it, we're giving the information public. Public information, excuse me. As you can see, I really think we should go back to those committee meetings, because I care for my constituents. They're taxpayers, they're the ones that keep us here, and we spend their money, not our money. We spend their money, folks. So I think the reasons that I'm hearing we shouldn't go back, they don't make a lot of sense to me. I'll leave it be.
Councilmember Nelson.
I think there's pros and cons to both sides of this. But I think, having been around a little while, while the committee structure was in place, I don't think the committee structure was really accomplishing what we needed either. I'd like to recommend that we stay with the work sessions, that we ask for more of the structure as to how we used to do the committees, be incorporated into the work session, that we be careful with that and not overload ourselves. Come up with a schedule. If it doesn't fit, you know, we've talked about the fifth Mondays, and we've talked about labor being separate, and we've talked about additional finance. Why don't we try that for the rest of the year? And see if we can get this to work so that we're comfortable with the structure. Stay with the work session, but try incorporating some of the other pieces back into it.
Councilmember Mesky.
Well, I'm just curious, are we at a point where, I mean, I'm not hearing anybody say that the existing working meeting structure is perfect? And I'm not hearing anybody, I'm hearing just a few of us talking about going back to a committee structure, but maybe everybody's on board that says that this process we're currently doing could be improved on, and let's start implementing those improvements. I would agree with Councilmember Nelson, that's probably what we need to do, is start getting a lot of that information back. Let's go to that fifth Monday and then reevaluate this again. And then if, as Councilmember Schwante said, maybe we go to it every other Monday, off the off Mondays, and fill in those gaps for some of these pieces like labor and finance if we're still not addressing them with the fifth Monday idea. But I, correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't heard anybody say that they think that the current system is working perfectly, and therefore we're moving sort of to a hybrid. I can live with that as long as we're not, nobody around this table is saying this is working the best way possible, because I would totally disagree with that assessment. If we can make it better every day, I think that would be great.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just one other comment. Councilmember Christensen talked about the minutes. And we do get a summary of our work session, and I'm not sure if that is available to the community. But perhaps we need to go to more of a structure for people who are interested in reading the minutes, do go out and search them out and read them. And so maybe we need to look at making sure that the public has access to the summary of what we did at our work sessions, as well as the, maybe that goes into our agenda for our council meetings, so.
And so for the listening public, what happens with those minutes is that information is sent to the council. Is that put on our website as well, Mr. Holland? Do you know?
The work session?
The work session minutes.
I know that prior to my arrival here, oh, the minutes, she's saying no, Judy's saying no.
Okay. Yeah, you can watch the video. I know you can watch the video, but I was just wondering what she was mentioning, and that hadn't come up before, so. Additional discussion, otherwise, I would like to ask the council if we're prepared to move this to the regular agenda for a vote, either tonight or to wait two weeks and then vote on it in two weeks. So are we ready to do that, or do we still want to bring it back to another work session and talk about it again? Councilmember Nelson.
I'm just curious if we are just deciding to continue, do we need to vote on it?
I believe we do, because we had a vote, we had a formal vote to do the six months.
Okay. Then I'd suggest we bring it back at our next agenda and not add it on tonight.
Okay. Mr. Holland, we've got consensus on that. So regular council agenda for the next meeting. Okay, moving on to the next item. Thank you very much for the discussion. Next item is Wilmer Municipal Utilities 2018 Budget. Mr. Heron, thank you for being here. I know you sat through the last hour and five minutes, and you get to see sausage made tonight, so it's all good.
Thank you very much, you counselor. John Heron, Wilmer Municipal Utilities General Manager, also Chairperson and Commissioner. Carol Lamar is with me as well. For this night, I prepared an outline of a number of subjects, topics that I would like to bring the council up to date on, in addition to our budget, as long as you allowed me the opportunity to come before you and present our budget. So with that, I'd like to give you more of a full update of what we all have going on at the commission, and hopefully solicit the council's support on some of the items that we're talking about as we go forward here. First of all, budget. Main reason why I'm here, in your packet, you have a combined statement of the utilities. And you can see that from a revenue perspective, we're roughly down slightly over $1 million. The bulk of that has to do with our energy acquisition adjustment that we implemented the first of the year. We implemented a flat amount. As we go forward, when we look at our power supply costs, it looks like our EAA for this upcoming year will be about $300,000. So that's the bulk of it. On the expense side, basically, we're flat across our utilities. And the reason we're flat, we do have wage increases in there, things of that nature in there. But right now, with our power plant staffing, we're presently down three employees over at the plant. So that's allowing us to have, to some extent, a flat budget. Retained earnings, when you look at our retained earnings, our retained earnings are down as well, and that has to do with what I indicated earlier. A large part of it is our energy acquisition fuel adjustment. Also, with our retained earnings being down, our retained earnings and our depreciation are the dollars that are used for making bond payments as well as for capital outlay costs, so, which leads into our budgets that we'll be talking about a little bit later, our rate increases that we'll be talking about a little bit later. As we move on to our statement of cash flow and five-year improvements, I won't go into great detail on it. It's in your packet. However, I'll touch on a few of the big items that are higher dollars, our PRAM substation, where design is underway. That provides redundancy to the community of Wilmer with providing power into the community. Right now, everything comes through the Wilmer substation, so that'll be a welcome addition to our system from a reliability perspective. Also in there is our office warehouse updates. The commission set a directive to have 25% set aside, set of dollars you see for next year, basically set aside funds with the additional dollars in the years further out. Diesel generators, also a larger dollar item. That's a placeholder, not knowing where we're going with power supply as we move forward here. That, we're analyzing that as we speak to determine what is the best course to take for the community with power supply in general. And then another big one is our water construction. You can see there's some big dollars there. And that staff is in collaboration, utility staff, city staff, looking at what the options are there. We have the chloride discharge limits, rules that we have to meet out at the wastewater treatment plant. Part of that water treatment comes into play in that with our options. And right now, city staff is exploring options with the consultant Donahue, as well as utilities, looking at options with Corolla. Once we have the additional scope of work prepared and costs and work done on those, we'll be back in front of both the council and utility commission, talking about the options that are available to this community in addressing the chloride discharge standards that we have before us. Questions on the budget?
Anybody else? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see in here these increases that, under your summary, you've got one at 5.4% for electric for 2018 and under 2019, correct?
Yep.
And water rate increase, 5% for the years 18 and 19. And alternative to identifying the internal transfer of government money or government, our payment in lieu of taxes would be an electric rate increase of 5% for 2018 and 19, if we keep at that amount, or at 11.6%. Is that right?
Correct.
So all of these rate increases are projected to keep the utilities above water?
Correct.
Okay.
If, Councilmember Christensen, if you want me, I can go into more detail before you...
I don't know if we need any detail, it's just the fact that it's going to cost more money.
Correct.
And we're closing the coal plant.
Yes.
And we'll be losing 20 employees, 22 or something like that. I think I know what's driving the cost, but I know you're also looking at a new building, you're setting money aside annually for that. And I mentioned before at other meetings that the medical field, the technology is changing drastically, and I think it is in the energy field also. This country and our city runs on energy. We need energy, and we need, it runs best on cheap energy.
Correct.
I remember the old NSP, penny-cheap electricity. The flatness of revenue is, I think it's caused from, well, water conservation, LED lighting. I mean, it takes you the same amount of money to run the MUC with less water consumption and less electric as it does with more. It seems like we're going backwards, and a lot of our costs, you're driven by employees, just like the city is. Your operational cost is 80, 90% employees. But at what point, if technology keeps going the way it is, and I foresee it in the future, that there's going to be a lot of people off-grid, not just companies off-grid, because that's happening across the United States presently. And energy is, it's driving these companies to do that. Why would we put a new building and set this money aside for a new building when we don't know what it's going to be like in five years? You maybe have 75% of the employees you have now in five years, and maybe a lot less people due to technology. I know the people in my ward, there's a lot of retired people in our ward, and I get calls from them constantly. I mean, some of them call me weekly about the cost of living in the city of Wilmer. And then we have in our proposed budget, a 3% increase in the levy, but to a lot of people, it's money. What can we do about that? And does it make sense, what I'm saying? You know, we're using less energy and less water, but you're asking for the same amount of money to do that. How can we reverse that? And it's just, I'm baffled. You can probably tell by what I'm saying, but it's costing a lot of money for energy. And when we're done with the coal plant, you know, the MUC is basically buying money offline, I mean, excuse, buying energy offline for X amount of pennies per kilowatt hour, and you're turning around and selling it for three to four times that. Tell me I'm wrong.
Hi, Counselor Christensen. Very good question, very good observation of what's going on out there. You are absolutely correct with what's going on with energy efficiency, and the electric industry is probably the only industry out there that pays its customers to use less energy. So yes, our... So, yes, our sales are declining, and with our sales declining, yes, you're right, we have costs of operation that still needs to be covered. And how do you do that? And where is the industry going? There is a lot of changes out there. I don't believe anybody really has a crystal ball to know where it's going to end up. There is some speculation on where it's going to end up. And you're right, a lot of people are looking at how can they produce their own power. However, most people, at least as we speak today, are able to produce power, but they're not able to produce power to the point to where they can be self-sufficient. And they're still going to need the grid and that backup power and the distribution system to feed their excess power when they're not using everything to produce back, so their neighbors can use it as well then as to use the power off the grid when they're short, when they have peak demands. But you're absolutely right, industry is changing. We try to keep up and say abreast of those changes so that we can prepare, prepare this community for the future, you know, as things evolve in the industry. I don't have the crystal ball. I can't see how 10, 20 years where, where the industry is going to be, but it is changing. It has always changed from the day, you know, they started producing electricity. You know, when you look at the history of the electrification of the countryside, it's been evolving since day one, and it's, it's continuing to evolve, yeah.
You say you don't know where we're going to be in 10 to 20 years. I don't think we're going to, we're going to be in five years. It's, it's changing that fast. And, and one of the questions I forgot was, how many MUCs or municipal utilities are in the state of Minnesota? Is there, is there a lot of them, or is there a lot less than there was 10 years ago?
The same. Um, I don't believe that number's changed. In fact, there's probably been, Minnesota has not had any new municipal utilities formed, but across the country, there has been some. I don't believe Minnesota has lost any either over the last 10, 20 years.
Okay, I, I didn't know that.
No, that's a good question. There is actually, in Minnesota, there is 124, I believe to be exact, municipal utilities that are communities that have municipal power. So, and it's holding steady.
And don't get me wrong, it's, it's good to have a, a local utility, because, I mean, as Councilman Fagerly stated a while ago, when something goes down or goes wrong, we got somebody right here.
When you, when you look at, at some of your IOUs, your independent electric providers, and you look at their reliability rates in comparison to your municipal utilities, municipal utilities stand out. They excel over the private sector. It's there to respond times they're short. The people live in and around the communities. When power goes out, they're here, they're, you know, they're just part of the community. So, from a, from a reliability standpoint, to have your own utility, you know, most other communities don't have it. They're fairly envious of the communities that do have.
I have a son that has four boys that live in Wilmer, and their utility bill is well over $300 a month. And he comes to me, today, he says, "What are we going to do? What am I going to do?" You know? "Can you pay me $300 more a month?" You know? It's costly to, to raise a family at, at current energy levels, not just energy, water, sewer. And, I mean, the sewer rates are, have just gone, duh, 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 up, up in the last 10, 12 years. And I know this is going to concern a lot of people, and I had to ask.
Oh, good question. Our, our utility rates, where do we compare? On the electric side, our rates, our retail rates are relatively close to average, where we stand right now today. On the water side, we are in a lower 25 percentile on our water rates. So, our rates are, are very competitive throughout the state of Minnesota and, you know, and the upper Midwest, so.
And that's good, because I'm sure companies look at that when they, they're all going to move to Wilmer because of our rates, and so we have to be careful.
We need to be competitive.
Yep.
And, and with that said, we're digressing from the agenda here.
Excuse me.
But, uh, that's one of the reasons that the Utility Commission has elected to look at the utilities as a whole. You mentioned power supply. We are locked into operating our plant because of district heat. That was not a decision that was taken lightly by the commission to, to move forward with that because of the effects it has on different people and the capital outlay. But in the end, everybody saves money, but it's still very difficult for people to come up with that money on the front end, even if there's a return on the investment. So, the commission has taken that step. Right now, you mentioned power supply. We are looking at our power supply and studying our options. In fact, at staff level, we meet almost weekly to talk about where we're going with the modeling of our different options that are out there with our power supply, and how do we address that to, to maintain or minimize increases that are needed if we continue business as usual. We have some long-term contracts that have some significant escalators and that were entered into five, six years back, that at the time, they seemed to be very attractive, but in today's world, they're very expensive contracts. So, as we move forward, we're going to be looking at those contracts as well to see if anything can be done at those contract, with those contracts as we move forward. So, there's a number of things that we're, that we're doing, and the first step was addressing the district heat, because that provides options. I've said that publicly a number of different times, even in front of the council, that plant is costing us right around 15 cents a kilowatt to produce power over there. We're selling it at 10 cents. Average retail rate's 10 cents.
I appreciate all you do in the Utilities Commission, believe me, and you've got a big challenge ahead of you.
So, those are some of the things. So, no, your comments are well taken, and, and the commission and staff, we're well aware of where we sit in the industry and looking at what options.
If we can get, get back to the agenda, that would be good. We're late on time again tonight.
Okay. I'll try and keep it short, but informational. When you look at the cash flow statement, you can see we go from a positive 13 million to a negative 4 million over a five-year window of time. So, with that, I'll go into the next item on the agenda that I presented to you. Looking at rate increases to address that, the commission has not implemented rate increases since June of 2015 was the last rate increase. And as the commission looks at options there, there's, there's a couple of options that are being looked at. One is, for transparency purposes, the commission is looking at line item, the intergovernmental transfer, just the cash proportion of it, that would bring us closer to industry standards with what is kept within our rates. And basically, what would stay within our rates would be street lighting and the wastewater billing would, would bring us close to industry norms. Bottom line, how does that affect the, the community, the taxpayers, our customers? When you look at what I mentioned earlier, the EAA, and, uh, and pulling out the intergovernmental transfer, the cash proportion of it, we would have about a 5.4% increase on the, on the electric bill to our customers, and that increase would be for 18 and no additional increase in 19 if we proceed with that. Unless there's questions on the front side of the agenda that I handed out, I will keep, keep moving with the backside in light of time here. Front side, there are some additional numbers and statistics in place that are pretty much self-explanatory. In lieu of line item, the intergovernmental transfer, what it would take to generate the same amount of revenue would be 5% for 18, 5% for 19 on electric side, and then on the water side, it would take 10 for 2018 and an additional 10 for 2019, is what the commission would be holding public hearings on and presenting to the council for consideration. So, with that said, with the capital costs that we would be incurring over the years, that shifts the cost breakdown between fixed costs, as well as the share of the costs that are applied to the commodity side, we'd be looking at a rate study, so we make sure that we keep our balance between the fixed and commodity charges on our rates. And then, uh, as we go forward there, line number six I'm on. Staff, city staff and utility staff, we've been collaborating regarding the replacement of water main costs as we go forward, and the reason we entered into those discussions, as we look at the ability to pay for them and the mechanisms that we're using to pay for them, that mechanism is not covering those costs, and we needed to, or we need to identify where those costs should be picked up. So, through discussions with staff, we're looking at presenting to the council, as well as to the commission, a proposal as we go forward regarding the water mains. And what we're talking about at staff level is to pick up the water mains through our rate structure, through the Utility Commission, as its Utility Commission is responsible for the water mains and, or for providing the water to the community, therefore, it'd be appropriate to have the mains built into our, our rates on the water side. We also talked about the fire hydrants presently. Fire hydrants are maintained by the city, and 25% of the replacement of them is picked up by the utility. Fire hydrants, their main purpose is for fire protection, which is typically a property tax-paying expenditure. So, from a staff level, we're looking at proposing to the commission and council that stays on the city side of it. And for water and electric, water and wastewater and billing descriptions, on the bill, there is a billing charge which gets questioned for all three utilities. Staff is going to be proposing that we change that to a fixed cost to better identify what that reflects, because there's more than just the cost of billing that's on that line in the billing costs, so. Then with that said, power plant staffing, I wanted to provide an update to the council with power plant. We will be making, the Utility Commission will be making a offer or a proposal to the union for consideration so we can move forward, so we can maintain the staffing that we need at the power plant until July 1st of 2020. And that consists of a severance package. It consists of performance pay. It consists of potential jobs, both at the utility, as well as the city, and possibly the hospital. Again, city staff and utility staff, we've been collaborating regarding what can be done between all of us so we can retain the, the needed number of employees to provide district heat to our customers until that date. So, uh, that will be coming before the council as well eventually. And we have our open house coming up, October 3rd. We'd like to invite everyone to our open house. We're serving from 4:00 to 6:30 PM. And with that said, I know it was brief. I didn't get into detail that I was hoping to, but the commission has offered to host a joint meeting if the council would like to have a joint meeting to further talk in detail about line item, the franchise fee, about the rate increases, and about the payment for water mains as we go forward. But if the council is comfortable with where we're going, we will move forward on the commission side and work with city staff and MOU, and with the commission to hold the public hearings for the rate changes, line, with line item, the intergovernmental transfer, so.
Okay, council, any questions? Councilor Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick one. How much money is being set aside each year from the fees you receive for this new building that's proposed?
We have for 2018, we have $1.4 million in our capital outlay plan.
And this year was what?
This year, I believe we...
I think it was a million, wasn't it a million?
I was going to say half, but I'm not sure, half million. I can, I can push you an email. And let you know what the exact, I would like to say it was a half million that we set aside this year.
So, next year will be the second year of collecting it?
Next year, I believe, will be the third year.
The third year, so 16 it was.
I think it was a half, a half, and then all this coming year, we got 1.4.
Okay, thank you.
When you push that email, make sure you push it, if you push it to our city administrator, then he could send it out, or else make sure the entire council gets it. I like the idea of having a joint meeting between the municipal utilities and the council. Counselor, are you in favor of that as well?
Sure. I think it's a great idea.
I think that'd be an opportunity for us to go more in-depth. I know you wanted to go a lot more in-depth, and that would give you that opportunity. So, why don't you work with Mr. Holland and set a date for that, and we'll get that set coming up in the future. We should have that soon, though.
Yes, very soon.
Correct.
So, I, recap then, items on that agenda, intergovernmental transfer, line item, and-
Work with Ike on those items, yeah.
Okay. We'll get the agenda set up and, and push out dates for, for that.
Perfect. And then if we do a, if we do a, a calendar doodle so that everybody can respond back to that. So, thank you so much.
We'll do that.
Appreciate your report.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. Appreciate the time. If you have any questions in addition to the council, by all means, feel free to reach out to me. I'd be more than happy and welcome the opportunity to spend more time on a one-on-one basis talking about some of the, of the works of the Utility Commission, so, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Backman, the Economic Development Commission Budget?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Aaron Backman, Executive Director of the EDC. The EDC is requesting that the city of Wilmer approve the 2018 operational budget for the organization. The proposed EDC budget for 2018 totals $572,540, which includes a county tax levy of $514,600. The 2018 budget was approved by the Joint Operations Board on July 13th, approved by the Joint Powers Board on July 27th, approved by the Candi Ojai County Commissioners on September 5th, all with no changes. For the second year in a row, the EDC will have a balanced budget that funds personal services, funds committee activities, funds loans, et cetera. A couple of highlights quickly. We will continue to have allocated $35,000 for the Tiger II grant, the Y project. We will continue to fund $34,000 for the tourism activities at the CVB, and so forth. We have five active committees that are part of our process, the Ag and Renewable Energy Development Committee, Broadband and Advanced Technology Committee, the BRE, or Business Retention and Expansion, Recruitment Committee, Finance, and Marketing and Public Relations. Three of those five committees will see a double-digit decrease or decline. And part of that is, I look at all the line items. We have 99 budgetary line items that I go through extensively with staff and evaluate, do they need to go up? Do they need to go down? Will they stay the same? And in the case of the Ag and Renewable Energy, that actually went down 39%. And it's not that we don't care about Ag, we do, but there were some one-times that were completed in the 2017 year, and principally, the Ag Producers Survey. That's a one-time survey that was done. Last time it was done was 12 years ago, for instance. BRE, we had some one-times in there. We were able to get a grant from SWIFT for a diverse BRE project. That was completed. We submitted the report to SWIFT, Southwest Initiative Foundation. We expect that there will be probably some follow-on activities. We, we expect that there will be some additional grants that we're hopeful that we can accomplish. And obviously, we have loans that we actively, actively look at in terms of projects. In 2016, for instance, we had four loans that were approved with the revolving loan fund. So far this year, we've had two that were approved. So, with that, I would be happy to stand for any questions that you might have.
Counselor? Councilor Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for all the work you do here, and you've been a blessing to this community, believe me.
Thank you.
Just a suggestion, it would be nice to have 17's budget next, right next to 18's so we could kind of see where the differences were. I know you explain them, but that, for me, I like to see where we're, and where we're going.
I can forward that to Ike.
Thank you.
Aaron, you're doing a great job. We appreciate the work you're doing in our community. Thank you for a detailed report, and we look forward to approving that as we approve the rest of our budget. So, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to item number eight, is an item that we have to get done tonight. And, Mr. Christiansen, if you would present that to us, please?
Members of the council, the item before you is the seal coat for the Civic Center parking lot. We opened bids, let me start before that. This parking lot project was scheduled, or is scheduled, proposed in 2018 CIP. After further examination and due to condition, anticipated additional usage of that parking lot, we're recommending it be completed this year. The, we requested quotes. We've got four quotes, the low from Asphalt Surface Technologies, amount of $33,737.50. And the recommendation is to award and authorize signatures for that quote and that contract, and also to approve reappropriation of $20,000 from the purchase of two Public Works International trucks to this seal coat project.
Okay, council, do you have any questions? I think one of the things that we should really point out here is the fact that we've made a lot of improvements out at the Civic Center this year. And this is really going to be the crown jewel, is just to put the, the frosting on the cake, so to speak. The city administrator and I had a lengthy discussion about this on Thursday as to, does this bring value or not, and, and it really is going to really make that a great project. And it really is going to really make that a great project. So, you know, hopefully, we can move that to the agenda so we can approve that for tonight to get that project done. And so, unless there's discussion, we'll just move it to the agenda. Okay with that? Okay. Thank you very much, and we'll adjourn this meeting. We're adjourned.